Ready when you are. Ready when you are.
All right.
He's ready.
Oh, first we're turning to gender reading.
He's ready, okay. This is so loud. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Rise and join in the Pledge of Religions.
Pledge of Religions to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McAdmire.
Here.
Councilwoman Iasili.
Here.
Councilman Pell.
Here.
Councilman Martell.
Here.
All right, let's begin our meeting with the review of the agenda for the meeting on Tuesday. It's going to be a lot of public hearings, twelve in all. Most related to the battery energy storage. The first is a public hearing to repeal Southampton Town Code Section 330-162.21 entitled, Battery Energy Storage Systems in Excess of 600 Kilowatts. The second public hearing is to amend Town Code Chapter 330-33 as it relates to business district uses. The third public hearing is to amend Town Code Chapter 330-37 entitled, Industrial Districts Table of Use Regulations as it relates to battery energy storage systems. The fourth public hearing is to amend Southampton Town Code Chapter 330 entitled, Zoning by Adding New Article 33 entitled, Battery Energy Storage Systems. The fifth public hearing is to amend Southampton Town Code Chapter 123 entitled, Building Construction Subsection 123-39.3 entitled, Battery Energy Storage Systems. The sixth public hearing is to amend Southampton Town Code Chapter 330 entitled, Zoning Subsection 330-76 entitled, Placement of Accessory Buildings, Structures, and Uses in All Districts. The seventh public hearing is to amend Town Code Chapter 157 entitled, Type 1 Actions, to add a new Section 8 as it relates to battery energy storage systems with a capacity of 600 kilowatts up to a maximum of five megawatts as Type 1 actions for purposes of seeker. And the eighth battery storage public hearing is to amend Town Code Chapter 330, Section 330-10 as it relates to residential use tables. The eighth public hearing is to accept an agricultural easement in connection with the subdivision known as...
Camacutico.
Camacutico LLC, Hamlet of Watermill. The tenth public hearing is to consider the acquisition of 11 Helens Lane in the Hamlet of North Sea, New York, and to amend the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the property. The eleventh public hearing is for funding for water quality improvement project for the Village of Southampton Moses Lane Park IA project. And the twelfth public hearing is to consider the adoption of the 2025 CPF Pilot Payment Plan payments.
Could I just ask the council, public hearings one through eight, are we allowed to receive the presentations on all of those?
Yes, together.
They could be explained, and then could we vote on them? Can they all be like together? Yes, that's what I'm...
They can be open together, they'll be called separately but open together. You can have the presentation as one and then closed. However you're going to do it, I think you're going to differentiate some from others as I think we're going to talk about as we get going. But yes, you can have the presentation as one.
Okay, because then it would open up eight public hearings. Are we doing that?
But you're going to call them all?
Or can it be one public hearing?
It'll be one, but it'll be considered the record of each one separately.
Okay.
The same record? The same record?
Yes.
And then we close them individually as...
Individually.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's proceed with the resolutions, Councilman Pell.
Town Board Resolution 49981, amend to Resolution 2025-213, include on-call emergency interpret for the Justice Court. Town Board Resolution 49982, amend Town Board Resolution 2024-214, include on-call emergency justice stereograph for Justice Court.
We just have to amend that to take out one of the two.
Title 49982, says to include twice.
Okay. So we'll take one out.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49972, co-sponsored by the entire board, to authorize a change order for NV5 for the Hampton Bay's multi-use path and bicycle lanes project. And this also has a change in the next-to-last resolved that the new contract total...
I'm missing a whole bunch of pages.
For Phase 2. For Phase 2, so it's the next-to-the-last resolved clause.
I'm sorry, you're at 49972? Page 21.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay, so you're on the page seven. Okay.
The next-to-the-last resolved. And it says that the new contract total, and we want to add the words for Phase 2.
New contract total for Phase 2.
Roman numeral 2.
Shall not be.
Yes, thank you. Town Board Resolution ID Number 50003, co-sponsored by councilmembers McAdmire and Pell, to authorize funding for water quality improvement project for the Village of Southampton Moses Lane Park IA project. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49950, to authorize payments to Santander Bank NA for the first financing payment pertaining to the Gap Vax vacuum truck. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49929, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell, to authorize the purchase asphalt and bituminous material using Suffolk County contracts. Town Board Resolution 49963, to authorize purchases of maintenance, repair, and operations supplies, equipment, and related projects and services from Wesco Distribution, Inc., using Omnia Partners contract. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49952, to authorize purchases of maintenance, repair, operating supplies, industrial, and related services using Omnia Partners contract.
Town Board Resolution 49938, authorize purchase of a new trailer King Trail of parts and service from Suffolk County Brick Service using the Southampton contract.
I missed my, oh, my whole agenda is out of order. Town Board Resolution ID 5002, authorize purchases of special pavement markings from Rosemar Contracting, Inc., using Suffolk County contract.
Town Board Resolution 49988, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McAdmire, to authorize the request for reimbursement for the Boy Scouts of America 2024-2025 Explorer Program registration fees. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49974, to authorize the supervisor to execute a service agreement with Source Pass Contemporary LLC. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49977, to authorize the supervisor to sign a service agreement with Clarity Cloud USA, Inc., for a permitting, licensing, and code enforcement system. That should be co-sponsored by Councilwoman McAdmire.
Could you add me to that, Cindy?
Sure. We're both on that working group.
We did a lot of work on that.
You started it a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, and it's, you know, happy, we really took our time with this. You know, I think it was just in the news that East Hampton is just going online with theirs. We're actually using a different system, but we did look at several. And this was, you know, after a lot of having everybody onboard and everybody looking at them and going through them, this was the one that we felt was the best for Southampton.
Yep, and Janice agrees, absolutely. It's really an exciting project. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49973, to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Nelson &amp; Pope for professional services related to engineering design of a solar photovoltaic system at the Central Garage in Hampton Bay's. Town Board Resolution ID Number 50005, to authorize the implementation and funding of a state Markacelli Program Aid Eligible Transportation Federal Aid Project to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid eligible and ineligible project costs and appropriating funds therefore for the Hampton Bay Shared Use Trail Project.
Cindy, can you lead me to that, please? Town Board Resolution 49877, authorize the purchase of recycling and repurpose equipment from Moll Bar LLC using Sourcewell contract. Town Board Resolution 49860, authorize purchase of rental equipment from Anida Rental, Inc., using Sourcewell contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 49975, authorize the supervisor to execute a park and recreation agreement with R is for Rugby LLC for surf camp instruction.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49971, to authorize the supervisor to sign a reciprocal fuel purchasing intermunicipal agreement with Suffolk County. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49884, to award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Elite Action Fire Extinguishing Equipment and Service, Inc., for inspection and repair of fuel pump fire suppression systems. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49917, to award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Fowler's Garden Center, Inc., and Riverhead Building Supply Corp. for fencing and stakes.
Town Board Resolution 49880, award and authorize supervisor to sign a contract with Fominak Environment, Inc., for private and mobile markets for disposing service of mobile solid waste.
Town Board Resolution ID 49890, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore and Councilman Pell, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Vendrite Vending Corp. for eight AMS outside vending machines.
This is so fun, this will be for the green bags to distribute them at the transfer stations.
Another thing that has taken a few years to get going, but I'm happy it finally is.
Yep, it's fun. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49945, to declare item surplus and authorize disposal of vehicles and equipment.
Town Board Resolution 49995, co-sponsored with Iasili, McAdmire, and Martell, recall amend Resolution 2025-637, authorize supervisor to execute a consulting agreement with Lisa Cover, Inc., to provide professional service to the community preservation department.
Town Board Resolution ID 49864, recall and amend Town Board Resolution Number 2025-573, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract with Questmark Information Management, Inc., for printing and mailing of Hampton Bay's water district bills rebid.
Town Board Resolution 49863, 2025 Notice to Bidders for the Milk Creek Boat Man. That's very important to people who have boats and trailers. Town Board Resolution 4997, 2025 Notice to Bidders for purchase installed foam defense. Town Board Resolution 4994, 2025 Notice to Bidders for purchase one or two used drive via van trailers.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49921, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for the Highway Department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49989, co-sponsored by Councilman Pell, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for Highway Special Events. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49968, to amend the 2025 adopted budget for Special Events. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49992, to amend the 2025 budget for various departments.
Town Board Resolution 49862, co-sponsored with Councilman Martell, to amend scope of work for Tiana Life Saving Station CPF Capital Project.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49836, co-sponsored by the entire board to authorize the adoption of the 2025 CPF Pilot Plan and payment of 2025 pilots. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49918, to authorize the closure of capital projects. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49962, to accept the resignation of Michael Charrier from the Architectural Review Board.
Town Board Resolution ID 49953, co-sponsored with Councilman Martell, reestablish and appoint members to the Flanders Riverside North Hampton Citizen Advisory Committee. Town Board Resolution ID 49941, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution Adopting Town Code Amendment Repealing Section 330-162.21 entitled, Battery Energy Storage System in Excess of 600 Kilowatt-hours. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49940, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution Adopting an Amendment to the Town Code Section 330-33, Business District Table of Uses. Town Board Resolution ID 49942, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution Adopting Amendments to Town Code Section 330-37 entitled, Industrial Districts Table of Use Regulations as it results to Battery Energy Storage Systems.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 50004, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McAdmire to assume lead agency for the purposes of seeker review and to adopt a negative declaration in connection with the Town of Southampton's Code, Chapter 330 Amendment for the creation of the new Article 33 entitled, Battery Energy Storage System.
Town Board Resolution ID 49967, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution of Adoption Amending Southampton Town Code Chapter 330, Zoning by Adding New Article 33 entitled, Battery Energy Storage Systems.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49966, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McAdmire, Resolution of Adoption of Amendments to Town, Chapter 123, Subsection 123-39.3 entitled, Battery Energy Storage Systems.
Town Board Resolution ID 49979, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution of Adoption Amending Chapter 330, Zoning Subsection 330-76 entitled, Placement of Accessory Buildings, Structures, and Uses in All Districts.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49980, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McAdmire, for a resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter 157 to add a new subsection 8 as it relates to the battery energy storage systems with a capacity of 600 kilowatts up to a maximum of five megawatts.
Town Board Resolution ID 49983, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, Resolution of Adoption Amending Town Code Chapter 330, Zoning Subsection 330-10 as it relates to the residential use tables.
Town Board Resolution 50008, notice adopt and amend Chapter 330 of the Section 183.189 to clarify the requirement of administration approval of multiple projects in the chamber, a new standard of 330-183-1811 to allow approval of any plans or so ordered by the court stipulant of settlement.
Town Board Resolution 49939, co-sponsored with Councilman Martell, this is 2025-2026 Home Sale Price and Rental Formula Multipliers for Units reserved for income-eligible households, which have been updated. Town Board Resolution 49928, this is a memorializing resolution in support of New York State. Did I go over? Sorry. Yep, sorry, I skipped.
Oh, okay. Town Board Resolution ID 49996, donation of Memorial Rock by the East Quogue Civic Association to be placed at the Village Green, East Quogue, in honor of Ann and Al Algerian.
Sorry about that. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49928, this is a memorializing resolution in support of the New York State DOT Proposed Roadway Improvements and Watermill Intersection of Little Cob Road and Montalk Highway, Watermill and Scuttle Hole Road and Montalk Highway. As per my colleague's recommendation, the third-to-last resolved clause was added in and states that the Town of Southampton respectfully requests that the evaluation and plans include surrounding tributary roads, including suggestions for alternative project plans, and make efforts to preserve the character of the affected hamlets and be it further. Madam Clerk, I just want to make mention that above that resolved clause, so the fourth-to-the-last, is a repetitive one. There's some redundancy there. So that has to be... Redact, yeah.
Also on 49996, I'd like to co-sponsor that with Cindy.
And I just also...
Yeah, I think the whole board should do it.
Yeah, me too.
4996, okay, are we doing the entire Town Board?
Mike, do you want to?
Let me let Michael finish his thought.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were on...
And I just want to make mention too, on that same resolution 49928, the two whereas clauses on the bottom of page 101, the two whereas clause where it says that it will encompass a holistic study considering existing subdivisions pending Southampton Town Planning Board applications and encompassing the entire corridor from Flying Point Road to Hay Ground Road, as well as what the other whereas clause states, request notice of any hearings at the state level so that Southampton Town residents and interested members of the public may provide input. That was also as per the CAC Chairperson's request. So the colleagues and the CAC Chair requested language have been all integrated into this resolution.
This incorporates all the comments we received at the works of the public hearing. Thank you. What's happening?
I said I have my...
Yeah, Michael, Bill and I will co-sponsor that with you also.
Excellent, thank you.
Then we also, on the rock for Allen, I think the whole board should do that.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Town Board Resolution ID 5000, authorize waiver of billing department fees for the East Quogue Fire District.
Wait, what page are we on?
102.
That one over.
Did we do the one with the... The one with the... The multipliers for the households? Well, you know, then for the 49996, I'll co-sponsor that.
I'm sorry.
49996, I'll co-sponsor that as well.
We got it.
We got it all.
You got it, everybody?
Okay.
All right. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49879, for 2025 part-time salaries. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49935, to accept the retirement of Eileen Quinn, accountant in the Comptroller's Office. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49937, to appoint Christopher Sedano to Maintenance Mechanic 2 in Municipal Works. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49965, to appoint Anessa Bitner to the accountant position in the Comptroller's Office. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49922, to appoint Nadine Edwards to Office Assistant at Human Resources. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49944, to appoint Tatiana Tucci to Assistant Town Management Services Administrator position from the Civil Service List. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49964, terminate an employee in the Housing and Community Services Department.
Town Board Resolution ID 49960, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell. This is to notice a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 312-11B to authorize additional stop signs on Noack Road at the intersections of Long Beach Road and Stonehill Road.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 49057, co-sponsored by the entire board to authorize the acquisition of 670 Middle Line Highway in the Hamlet of Bridgehampton, New York, and to amend the CPF Management Plan and Stewardship Plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49985, co-sponsored by Councilmember Iasili to recall and amend Resolution 2023-92 for Attilio Soma and Mary Beth Soma, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated situated in Hampton Bay's is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49976, to recall and amend Resolution 2025-85, road review application for James Conforti, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated situated at North Sea is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49984, a road review application for 10 Lakewood LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated situated at East Quogue is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID Number 49978, it's a road review application for LA Luxury Construction, Inc., Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated situated at North Sea is accepted. And the last one is, Town Board Resolution ID Number 49987, road review application for the Village of West Hampton Beach, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated situated in West Hampton is accepted. And then there's two add-ons.
Add-on is 50009, amend the 2025 adopted budget for the Highway Department to include chips, paving, New York, EWR, and POP funding.
Madam Clerk, can I be added as a co-sponsor to that?
Town Board Resolution ID Number 50010, to appoint Claire Vega to Office Assistant in the Justice Court.
I just want to mention quickly before we move on, the battery energy storage stuff, even though it's all on for adoption, we can, based on the input at the public hearings, we can table those, depending on what we do with the public hearings. If we close them, if we leave them open for two weeks, we can always table them.
Depends on the comments we get, right?
Yes. And I also did last week attend the Southampton Town Fire Chiefs Meeting and brought them copies so that all the departments are aware of the changes.
So we may very well hold it open for comments. I think we need some agency comments as well. Very good, okay. Well, next on the agenda is a discussion by Janice Shear, Town Planning and Development Administrator on the Hampton Bay's Village Business District Extension. And Teresa Mason's here too.
Thank you, Teresa and Janice for coming.
Good afternoon.
Do you want me to start with why I asked for this?
Please.
So I had reached out to Janice because there's been a lot of conversation in Hampton Bay's about what their downtown is and what it encompasses. And we've heard lots of comments through the pattern book process and everything else that their Main Street really does extend east of Honk Quogue. And there's actually a sign at, was it Old Riverhead Road, Rick? That says Main Street Hampton Bay's. So I asked Janice to take a look at this because also we do have some information in the corridor study, and I felt like this would be a good time now that we've adopted the pattern book to give us the opportunity to really, you know, unify the whole downtown Main Street of Hampton Bay's. Take it from there.
Thank you so much, yes. So we looked at the corridor study, GEIS corridor study, and that's this document here, we gave you a whole packet of stuff with maps and such. And this document with the blue, that denotes the areas that you see on the map that's proposed to change. So that was already looked at. And there's a wider portion, I think that can, you know, we've only just gone to the Old Riverhead Road. If you go to Old Riverhead Road and you make a right, there's a thing that says Main Street Hampton Bay's. It says Main Street, so we cut it off there. There's more to talk about further east, going toward Canoe Place Road, but just right now, we're just talking about that segment. It is a comprehensive segment, it's not spot zoning, and it is consistent with what the changes are in the corridor study saying to go from HB Highway Business to HC Hamlet Commercial. HC is Hamlet Commercial Residential technically. So there's a couple of parcels that are also recommended for VB, and that was 31 East Montalk Highway and 61 East Montalk Highway. One of those is the church. It doesn't really matter, you know, VB allow, any zone allows a church. So there's no issue there. And the one next to it. So that was sort of a continuation of the VB, and the rest was HC. And HC, the purpose of HC was to frame those downtown segments. So in other words, you know you're in a Main Street when like the buildings are up on the road, you know, you've got that traditional feeling, we're here in the Village of Southampton. And you, it kind of steps back as you get away from that traditional hamlet center, and that's what HC is all about, not as big buildings, smaller, cuter, looking like residential-ish and feeling transitional. And that's the idea of HC. And so that would be along this south side there. Transitional. And that's the idea of HC. And so, that would be along this south side there. You see, after the King Cullen, it starts, you know, and it just like tapers down all the way to where the, south of that Old Riverhead Road, where the Long Island Railroad crossing is.
So, it proposes to go right down to?
Just down to that point, on the south side, make all of those HBs.
I have a question on that.
Hamlet Commercial, yes.
I would rather go right down to Spelman or Hobbyland, because you have commercials or, you know, businesses all the way down and down.
We could do that too. I mean, that is recommended all the way down to the end. I thought we were just talking about when Councilwoman McNamara mentioned to me, it was sort of like the traditional Main Street from Old Riverhead Road going to Ponquag. So, we just selected this segment here from the corridor study.
I think we gotta do what you do, you know, so we don't have to look at it again.
More than happy to.
The rest of the board feels about that, but that's all businesses and it could be stores.
Those are a little bigger, like as far as, you know, the buildings would be a little more non-conforming, but we can certainly do that.
Just for your records, in the packet, you have the larger overview that goes all the way down to Canoe Place Road, and then what we were given to understand was just the area towards Old Riverhead Road. So, this one is a smaller, more zoomed in.
Yeah, that's one that we thought we were talking about today.
And we can do the analysis on the larger, I had started that, but we could.
Yeah, we don't, we, the comp plan says to do all of it all the way down. But we, for this purpose, we were like, well, this makes sense for the traditional downtown Hamlet Center. And then as you fan down toward the, you know, that's like some R W B, you've got Canoe Place in, you have, you know. And then this new zone, this new zone would actually be a buffer between VB and those uses. Right. So, the comp plan says to take it the whole way. The comp plan is, you can see. So, this is what we're talking about here, the blue, and the green is up here. But it also, highway business extends down even further where Norrell's is, you know, where the.
Would Norrell's then be non-conforming?
Yeah, will become, those are a little trickier. These are a little easier, but it's up to you. We could do whatever you want.
I just don't want to make businesses become non-conforming.
You know, you can do it more than one, you can do this and then come back and we can analyze that. Like, we don't, you don't have to, you know, this is enough of a corridor piece that it's not like spot zoning or anything. This is definitely contiguous, comprehensive. So, it, you know, this, as you move further down, I just want to take a closer look at it, but we can do it.
Yeah, take a closer look, then you can come back.
So, Bill, just, if we can do it in stages, because I think this is the area that people have the misconception that it's already village business. And if we concentrate on that first, see how it shakes out, and then continue on.
Fine with that, but as long as we continue to look at, do it all the way down.
Because we have had emails from, you know, people in the community asking for this change. And I remember, yeah, when we were doing the pattern book, I was thinking, why wouldn't we extend it, you know? It does seem like it's the Main Street already, so I don't have any problem with doing something like this.
Would we have to amend the pattern book?
We can look at that. It probably has like between Ponquag and Springville type of words, so we would change that to Ponquag and Old Riverhead Road.
But if it says, you know, it applies to village.
Village business, but this is HC, most of it. There's only two that are village business, and one of them is the church, which isn't changing. You know, and then the next door to it. So, VB, and then the rest is HC, which has its own design requirements. HC is a little more strict.
But now it would be incorporated into the village business, so that would be covered by the pattern book?
That's what I'm saying. The pattern book covers the specific VB area, and the church and the next door piece will become VB. But now we're saying we're doing these other ones to be HC, and the pattern book doesn't talk about HC. So, we may have to just like talk about that it covers this area, this geographic area.
I thought you were talking about making it all village business.
No, it's not being all village business, because, I mean, it could be, but I think you're better off making it Hamlet Commercial, because it frames that village business, and it's already recommended that way. The, and we gave you a use table, the uses are very similar in VB versus HC. It's just that there's a higher concentration of design in HC, where the buildings have to be smaller.
And it gives you that buffer between highway business and village business.
Yeah, it's meant to be a transition, transition zone, between the traditional downtown and any other zone. So, it's like a step-down zone. So, like, traditional downtown is kind of up on the road usually, or more intense activities, and then it steps back and smaller, like, cuter buildings and less intense use, as far as that goes.
Does it change any parking requirements or accessory buildings or anything?
It is different, it's a different zone.
Pieces in here.
Some of these, we did a little analysis of that. Which ones are?
Did you hand that?
Yes, I think the last page.
Green, it's like a green spreadsheet.
Unfortunately, I didn't have the opportunity to do the parking analysis. I didn't do that.
So, you'll see, like, so these are the addresses, and it's saying, does it become non-conforming? You know, like, if it's changed. Some of them say, no, it doesn't. And then some, a couple, one, two. A special trade contractor would definitely not be conforming anymore, so that's an issue. One of them's already non-conforming. You know, the proposed laundromat would become non-conforming. The special trade contractor slash deli would become non-conforming. But all the other retail and restaurant type of activities would be consistent. So, it's really the special trade contractor type uses in highway business that are the ones. But, at the same time, maybe those aren't the best things, because, I mean, you see these land, these trucks and stuff, and they're all parked along the road, and in the corridor study, there's a lot of conversation about that. But this would, they would become non-conforming, and then they would, if a new use came in, would have to move towards a conforming. Yeah, that's the idea. So, we're not putting anybody out of business, we're not. Non-conforming uses can stay as long as they want, and they can also go to the ZBA to expand up to fifty percent.
But the approval for the laundromat, I mean, there's no laundromat going in there, right? It says vacant.
There is an approval. Recently approved late last year by the planning board.
Oh, but they just never went in?
It was approved in November, so I'm sure they're going through the process of getting their building permits.
But they would still be able to?
They can still build, because they have permission to build under the use, but they don't have a shovel on the ground right now, so I'm not really sure how that works. Yeah. Pucci?
Pucci.
Pucci. And you don't vest your rights until you have some significant development. So, that's interesting. That's one, that's.
There's a lot of community pushback on that as well.
Well, yeah, there's, people don't think that's an appropriate location. Some people were not happy about it. That's certainly not why we're looking at this, but that was one that came up as problematic. But this predates that by a mile, like, the recommendations to change it.
The recommendation in the comp plan.
Way longer, way older than that laundromat.
So, we should, we should definitely do this. I mean, if it's in the comp plan, I think it's important that we move forward on implementation, and I agree, maybe we should just do section by section. This is a good first step.
The special trade contractor office is different from the special trade contractor, right? With the office, they don't, it's administrative, would you say?
Offices are permitted in HC, VB, and highway business. This is just denoting what are they using the property for. So, they have a special trade contractor, and they have an office, you know, use. In, we have like number of uses, like you can have one use. In HB, one use per ten thousand, and then if it's office, one use per four thousand of lot area. So, you can still have all, like, various uses in Hamlet Commercial. You can have a shop, you can have an office, you can have, some of these things, actually, it works out better for them. Because highway business is, requires a lot larger land area, because it requires bigger buildings. And it doesn't require bigger buildings, you can build a bigger building in highway business than you can in Hamlet Commercial.
Unfortunately, I think in many of the cases here, on this particular section, though, it's not just strictly an office for the special trade contractors. It is, it is the use as well.
Oh, yeah, they have both. They have a special trade contractor, meaning like maybe landscaper or trucks, or, you know, mason, whatever the special trade is, plumbing.
Because I know with Hampton, we have a distinction, you can have the office in the downtown, no truck stuff.
That's what you're changing this to. That would be this, HC. You would actually be allowing the office, but not the special trade contractor, unless they're already there.
Yeah.
Non-conforming.
A lot of them.
There's several. What's this? That's just the notice if you want to.
We have to do a supplemental, or can we use the one for the study?
Can use the one from the study.
I would like to put it on for a public hearing for, not for July, I'd like to be on for a nighttime meeting so that we can get more input.
Sure.
So, if we could put it on for June twenty fourth.
Yes.
Can we, can we put this on? Can we, is, can we add it, is everyone okay if we add this to the agenda? We don't even have to do it as a walk-on if we add it on.
I would just have to amend it and submit it, but it would be, I would change the date to June twenty fourth, six P M, and then I noticed a typo in the title I have.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, as long as, you know, we make sure we look at it and you don't have, you know, any inconsistencies or typos or anything, you know? Because I feel like, you know, it's a good idea, we just don't want to rush it. So, we could put it on for the, we can add it to the agenda.
I'll submit it into MinuteTrack.
For June twenty fourth.
For June twenty fourth, and this is resolution.
Could you actually, what, Janice, could you, because they could do it as an add-on now, so we don't have to walk it on on Tuesday.
ID number five zero zero zero.
Yeah, so we do it as a walk-on.
Yeah, walk-on's easier.
Okay.
Yeah, because the clerk's not here.
It's fine.
You have to just to submit it, you know?
It's not submitted. I didn't want to submit it and not get any feedback.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, you're on a safe side.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Janice, I'll reach out later, because I just want to make sure that some of these that have multiple buildings on it, that down the road, they don't lose value in their property, because we rezoned it. You know, if they have an office up front and say a warehouse in the back, I want to make sure that down the road, they wouldn't have to tear the warehouse down.
We don't, it's, you know, the grandfather's rules, grandfather invasions, they get to keep whatever you have.
Down the road, what happens?
Sell it with the grandfathered use, yeah. You never lose your, the use runs with the land. You always have that use. It just comes down to if you want to, let's say, get rid of that use. Let's say you were a warehouse, and now you want to be something else, you would have to, you know, come in and make those arguments to say the ZBA for the, you know, same size in the new realm, in the new zoning. If it's a different use, but as long as it's the use you had, you get to keep everything you have, and you can go to the ZBA to expand up to fifty percent. Those are our grandfathering.
And a change in use might just trigger parking regulations and curbing and all that stuff too.
Right. So, if I, if I was a landscaper and I sold to Janice, and she was an electrician, we could still be okay there legally.
This is kind of special trade to special trade, so you could still go between different types of special trade too.
Okay.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
We'll, you know, get back to you if we have any questions too, in the meantime. All right, that brings us to the Town Council and Supervisor Liaison Updates, where we started last time. Rick, do you have a?
Let's see. Well, I had the pleasure today of joining the Remsenberg Elementary School in their Memorial Day festivities. Unfortunately, the parade was canceled, but we had a wonderful event inside. They invited some of the local veterans out. The best part about that is the kids in third through fifth grade who give their speeches about what Memorial Day means and how much they appreciate the veterans. It gets, it's very heartfelt, and it gets, you know, you tear up a little bit to listen to these kids. The fact that, you know, we're teaching this, and the history's not getting lost, and they appreciate their veterans and those who passed, you know, really make a difference, so I want to give them credit for that. Sunday, we had the dedication of Southampton Village Ambulance Facility, it was very well attended.
I sent some remarks, I hope.
I read yours, I read, yep, I read yours, and kudos to Councilwoman McNamara, who rode by in a motorcycle, I think motorcycled up before. Raising a lot of money for a local burn center. Basically, a great effect to get the whole day they started, but it was, it was a nice event. It's a great facility. And like I said, a very good turnout. It was great to be there. Other than that, we've had our local CAC meetings. We had Hampton Bays yesterday. Wasn't able to attend two on the same night, so I did Hampton Bays with Michael. A lot going on at Hampton Bays, a lot of concerns. We're working on an outreach for some information for our local businesses that will present to the board at a later date. But it's been a good week.
Thank you for all that. Bill?
Myself and Supervisor, and Michael and Cindy went to awards for the seniors who are going into the armed service. I'll leave it there, so we can each talk about it.
Yeah, it was at the Southampton High School, and it was Hampton Bays, and Southampton, and West Hampton Beach, all had students going into the military, and just so proud of them all, they're very brave and, and, well, Michael, I want to say.
No, no, no.
Did you want to say anything else?
Wednesday, this Wednesday coming up, myself and Rick Martell will be at Hampton Bays to talk about the Bellia with the plan.
Oh, good, yeah.
Wait a long time.
Positive, positive feedback only.
Yeah, you're gonna have some renderings to show, right?
Yes.
I can't be there, I've got to be at another civic meeting, but you're.
We'll be all good, and we can take remarks, we can, you know, if we have to move something, we can, you know, we're allowed to do that.
Yeah.
But not too much.
Not too much.
Because we don't want to store-bowl them.
No, I know, get going. What do they say? Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Anything else?
Nope.
I went to a, this week, Water Quality Restoration Fund Board, that's the group that the county formed, and there's twenty-one members, and we're all collaborating and breaking up into different committees, and I signed up for the Committee on the Sewers and for the IA Systems. And there's also like a Finance Committee and Labor Committee, and we're just trying to prioritize projects. And this is for the one-eighth of a cent on the sales tax. And it's going to be about three million dollars a month, which is good, but then again, the projects are so expensive. But the first task is to get a scoring rubric in place and try to determine what are the, you know, what is it that we have to, who gets more points if the project, even though it's a really great project, but a different project is closer to the water, or, you know, would eliminate more environmentally sensitive areas, so, so that's what that is. I'm excited to be part of it, and looking forward to getting to work on that. Michael?
I'll be brief. Circle Beach in Noack has been repaved, the parking lot there. Folks will be very happy, thanks to the trustees and Town Highway. Also, last Wednesday, Rick Martell and I joined the Hampton Bays American Legion for a burger night. Burger night is still ongoing. Enjoy the Dave Burger, it's a special that they're running. It's pretty good. And also, I will say, earlier this month, it was terrific joining the Pecanic Estuary Partnership, where I have been, I've become the new Local Government Committee Chair. I'm really looking forward to working with P E P to make sure we're closely monitoring our bays and our waterways, taking care of our estuary, and look forward to making sure Southampton is well represented in the work they do.
Thank you. Cindy?
Actually, of a bit, because we didn't have a work session last week. Councilman Martell and I attended ethics training with Steve Leventhal. Um, Councilwoman Martell and I attended ethics training with Steve Leventhal and a bunch of our town staff. Um, it's very informative, I think some of you are going next week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, I also attended the Southampton Town Fire Chiefs Meeting, um, I brought them the Battery Energy Storage Code and handed out copies in case anybody had questions. I let them know about the public hearing if they wanted to weigh in, um, and I went briefly through some of the changes that we have made that would benefit the fire service. Um, they are actually, they voted to send a letter of support for the communications tower at the Shinnecock Dock, um, because they are in need of that emergency services antenna. Um, I did go to our, um, a motorcycle club that I'm a member of.
Is that going to go to the planning board?
That's at the, in the planning board, I think where it's going to the planning board, yeah. So they're sending that letter to the planning board.
That's good.
Um, we had a bike blessing that we've had, it was our twentieth annual bike blessing. Um, we have raised over two hundred thousand dollars for the volunteer firefighters' burn center. Um, following that ride, I went to the Southampton Town Ambulance Barn. Um, Jimmy Mack was kind enough to give me a tour, um, I spoke to him briefly, and also Ian King. I had attended a Narcan training at Sag Harbor Firehouse that was run by Dave Volkowski and Suffolk County Sheriffs, and we, um, we said what a great opportunity it would be to use that new training facility, the training room at the ambulance facility to do, you know, run, run the whole, like in the off-season, Narcan training where you can go and you can get Narcan training and C P R and first aid all in one shot. Um, I said I would love to do that for our town employees and open it up to them and maybe have them run classes for us. Um, and then lastly, on Monday, uh, some of you joined me for the Hometown Heroes Banner Program in the park, in Good Ground Park, Councilwoman I A silly and Councilwoman Martell were there. Um, it was just another great turnout of a bunch of great veterans and people that we were able to honor this year, um, I was actually able to honor my grandfather, uh, who was a veteran of World War Two, Korea, and Vietnam, and served for twenty-seven years and retired from the West Hampton Air Force Base. So it was actually a really nice event, and it always is every year, and I want to thank the Southampton Press because every year they print all of the banners in the press, which is a very nice thing for them to do, um, and that's pretty much all I have. And I would just ask that everybody this weekend, you know, in addition to your barbecue, go to a Memorial Day service somewhere.
There's enough of them.
Yeah.
And, and you and I went to, uh, the East Quoc Civic, it seems like so long ago, but we haven't had a meeting since then, and they talked about the Park District, and Kathleen Murray came and gave them the info, and we've got a work session scheduled for June fifth.
Yep, and we already have a follow-up evening meeting scheduled at the school so that more people, because so far they've been all morning meetings, so we're doing an evening meeting at the school so the parents can attend.
Very good.
And working people, not just parents.
All right, well, if no one else has anything, uh, to say, then I move to go into executive session to discuss personnel and then close.
Suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.